At this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting of the Wallingford Inlands Wetlands Water Course Commission to Order. The date is May 7th, 2025, and the time is 7 o'clock. Will you join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag from the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Eileen McKean.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Jim Heilmann.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of April 2nd. Is there any comments regarding the minutes, any corrections, any additions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note some modifications to the minutes if they're acceptable. Page 1, the last line at the end references attachment 1. There is no attachment, so I would move to strike that if you want to go.
Is that the only one, Jeff? Go ahead.
On page 2, appearing tonight, Mr. Sean Doherty, Executive Director, insert YMCA. Dropping down to the second long paragraph, line 4, found that they do not should be found, I'm sorry, found out they do not should have, should be found out they were not. So replace do with were. Moving on to page 9. At the top of the page, there are two references to no one appeared in line 1, and then underneath in line 1, under number 2. Those should be stricken. And also, this item, and you'll see H dot 1 dot action in line 1, that should be stricken as well. And this item under number 2, this item, H dot 2 dot action should be stricken as well. And then moving on to page 10. The long paragraph in the center, starting Mr. Anderson, down to line 8, collapsed and staged it on the Santa Maria's lawn regrade. Between lawn and regrade should be the word from.
No, the line above.
I'm sorry, the line above. Oh, I'm sorry, Erin. Build up the stream, so it's line 7, and build up from the stream. And then line, I guess it would be 9, instead of plain at the beginning of that sentence, plain topography, it should be plan topography. So I move that with those modifications.
Do you have anything on page 11? No, we're set.
Okay.
All right, is there a second to the corrections?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to modify the minutes of the last meeting. Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Debbie?
Abstain.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy? Yes. Okay. That also means we're approved, the minutes, minutes are approved.
Okay.
Okay, now. All right, going on to the old business agenda. I'm going to move the agenda around a little bit, the items around. I'd like to bring up item 6, which is Town of Wallingford, Application A 25 3.3, 300 Williams Road.
Hi, good evening, I'm Tom Flannery, I'm the Senior Engineer with Water and Sewer. This is Abdell Naasiri, he's also an engineer with our division. Subject property, tonight we're discussing is 300 Williams Road. It's open space that the Water Division purchased with Water Division funds. It's approximately 95 acres and it's known as Parcel B. The idea for purchasing the land is twofold. One, provides some passive recreation for the general public, hiking, birding, et cetera. Also, the second part of that is to protect our watershed. The muddy rivers flows to the property as a direct tributary to McKenzie Reservoir. It's a Class AA water course, and the entire property is Class 1 watershed. The design process, we're in charge of designing a driveway for access to the property. Driveway will be approximately 24 feet wide by 380 feet long. Have six parking spaces, and the finish will be three-quarter inch stone. It will not be paved. From that point, at the end of the parking area, we'll establish a trail to connect there's an existing trail farther back in the property. So we'll have a foot trail which will connect with that, so they can do a loop through the property. The proposed driveway passes through approximately 40 feet of wetlands. Look on the map, that'd be the pink area in the middle of the driveway, the pink shaded area. There's also a 50-foot upland review area on each side, which is a green shaded area. Right now, there's an existing 12-inch drain pipe which acts like a pass-through underneath that area. There's really no flow either way, it's just kind of a pass-through. We have no plans to connect to it or alter in any form. The driveway is going to have a bit apron coming off of Williams Road. The remainder of it will be three-quarter inch stone. We'll have three-quarter inch stone with a filter fabric underlay on top of an eight-inch process base, which will have a geogrid underlay. And where needed, we'll be using clean fill approximately 12 to 18 inches, mostly in the middle across the wetlands, to bring that to grade. Some of the stone also will help, and use surface water mitigate through the stone from north to south. So also outside of the pipe installing, it should help flow to get through there. We're going to use a guardrail along the driveway itself. It's a, be a weathering steel guardrail. Wood is not used, we were thinking about that, but with the possibility of contamination from any arsenic or any preservatives they have for, preservative for the wood, we thought it'd be best not to use that in the watershed. We're installing a crosspipe across the wetlands. This can be 12-inch corrugated plastic. It's going to be wrapped in a six inches of three-quarter stone with a filter fabric wrap. Be connected on both ends to a concrete precast headwall, approximately four by four by one inch, one foot thick. And the new pipe will not connect to the old pipe. There'll be a gap between the existing pipe and our newly installed pipe. They will not interact. Silt fence will be installed around the entire site. It's hard to pick out on the, on the map, but the hay bales will be, excuse me, also perched on both ends of the outlet pipe and some more to protect the existing pipe that's in place now. So the installation process goes as such. Well, first step, we'll install the sedimentation and erosion controls. Once that's in place, we'll clear the brush on the site. We'd need to pump any water that's down to the bottom of the hill from north to south as needed. Then we'll excavate for the new 12-inch drain. Then after that's excavated, we'll install the hay bales in that particular area. After that, we'll remove any topsoil that's not needed, we'll bring that off-site. That will not be stored on-site. There was staging area, if you look to the left, there's two staging areas. That'll be for machinery, any materials they need to, for the project. After that, we'll install the grade and install the driveway, install the guardrail, the signage and the bench, and once that's complete, we'll remove all the equipment off-site. Any questions?
Okay, all right, so you're basically, commissioners, we got a driveway crossing here, which we always understand that people should get to both sides of their property. So at this time, any questions? Ally?
No.
Deb? Mike?
No.
Jeff?
No questions.
Okay, Erin, you're all set on this?
Well, I just want to say that the, my environmental planners report went out on Friday with the photos of the area to get a better sense of this wet meadow situation. That's one thing. And then in meeting with the applicant, they did a revision. That's what you got tonight, and this is what you'll be approving. Not what came in with the application form, but the revision of that. And the biggest difference is, this was, I handed it out, it was on your dais tonight when you arrived.
We're all set then.
The, I just want to point out, the biggest difference was the, they tightened up the upland, tightened up the wetland soils because they had David Lord go out there and, and actually flag them. So the area of the existing pipe is filled, because years ago, the farmer had filled over the, that low area to get the equipment in, of course. So that's the biggest difference between this plan and the plan you got previously.
All right, the, I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Application A 25-3.3, 300 Williams Road, Town of Wallingford driveway crossing be deemed not a significant impact activity.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll enter a motion to approve or deny this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Application A 25-3.3, 300 Williams Road, Town of Wallingford driveway crossing be approved with the, with the following conditions of approval that are outlined in the environmental planners' report of May 2nd.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Do you have any problems with the conditions of approval, sir?
None whatsoever.
Okay, call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike? Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going on to item 1, Application 19 3.7, 988 East Center Street for bond request. Return bond request?
I did go out there, I'm, but the, I didn't get a chance to meet with the owner applicant, so I'd like to continue that.
There's nothing, nothing yet?
Nothing yet.
Okay. All right, going on to item 2, Application A 25 1.1, 8 North Turnpike Road, YMCA.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for hearing us out tonight. I'll turn it over to Annette.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Annette Ellis. I'm a professional engineer with Giuliano Associates. If you could speak up because the AC is interfering. Sure. Thank you. My name is Annette Ellis, better? Professional engineer with Giuliano Associates here in Wallingford. I'm here with the YMCA application at 8 North Turnpike Road. We gave a detailed presentation at last month's meeting, but we want to go over what's changed since then. We received a final copy of the environmental planners' report late on Monday morning. We had some drafts previously. We worked on addressing the environmental planners' comments Monday afternoon and Tuesday. I did not submit official hard copies of the revised plans since it was the day before the meeting, but I did provide electronic copies to the environmental planner so that she could see that her comments were addressed. And we also discussed the revisions today on the phone. So the following changes have been made. If you need me to point anything out on the map, just let me know. So the first change involves the temporary sediment trap number 2, and that has been reconfigured to be outside of the wetlands area, and it's also a foot shallower. Its disturbance to the wetlands and the upland review area have been added. It brings the total wetlands disturbance to 1,775 square feet. It brings the total upland review, review area disturbance to 20,128 square feet. And there's been no change to the water course disturbance. It's still 504 square feet. It's about 42 linear feet on the north side, 46 linear feet on the south side.
Hey, hold up, hold up.
Sure.
You're, you're reading from documentation that was generated, you say, this Monday, two days ago?
The numbers I gave-
Or a week ago?
The numbers I gave you are for the revisions that I made this week.
Were resigned this week, so?
Yes.
I, I mean, if we're going to follow you along, do we have that correspondence that you're talking about? I mean, I mean, you're, you're, what you're changing, what you're making a presentation of, is this pond is five cubic feet bigger than that pond or something. I mean, we're going to be here all night, there's 13, there's 13 items of conditions of approval. Now, have you satisfied all those 13 items?
Yes, those are the revisions that I made.
So basically, you, you've satisfied all these?
I've either satisfied them, or they would still be conditions of approval, like the placards. I can't address that on the plans, but we agree to that, of course.
I'm not going to listen to every item as we go down. That, all that presentation belongs in her office, not tonight's meeting.
Sure, I talked to her earlier today.
You know, you, you, we're not here until 11 o'clock tonight, when that should have been done in that office. So, the, the, you're basically saying you're agreeing to all the conditions of approval?
Correct.
All right, commissioners, do we have any questions regarding the commission, the conditions of approval? Or is anything specific?
Yes.
Ally?
I don't have anything.
No.
Mike?
No.
Jeff?
No.
I mean, I wondered why, why do we have water and sewer in here? What, what is that a condition of approval for water and sewer regarding wetlands?
If you look at what I handed out tonight, it's a separate set of all the conditions of approval.
Yeah?
Okay, if you look at the last page, that's the water divisions, conditions of approval.
But what does that have to do with wetlands?
They requested that we include it in the application approval. It says in there-
You're not, you're not contesting it anyway.
Correct.
No.
All right, Jimmy, you got any comments, Jim?
No, I'm satisfied with-
I'm sorry, I didn't ask you, I apologize.
That's fine, no issues.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say, why I reprinted it is, and this, tonight, if you go ahead and prove it, please use these conditions of approval, because there was something changed that I now had to change the conditions.
Why did it take so long? How long has this been going on, three months, four months?
Yes.
I mean,
What I'm referring to-
Everything keeps getting changed all the time.
That's true.
Well, that shouldn't be. You, if you get, if you submit somebody, do this or do that, don't next week change it again.
Well, maybe, Annette wants to talk about the soil borings report that came in on Friday.
And what did the soil borings have to do with wetlands?
They said that the groundwater table, I said that you can't, I felt the groundwater table would be too high to put a temporary sed trap in that area, and the report said, I believe, yes, Annette, am I right? The report said, yes, you better not put it there, is that what he said?
The report had groundwater at 5.25 feet, and that sediment trap is four feet deep.
Was it four?
Do you have to change the sediment trap after the, the test borings?
No, I was changing it to get it out of the wetlands, but-
Yeah, but the test borings, did that indicate anything on the sediment trap?
No.
So I asked Annette to move it out of the wetlands, that, you shouldn't put a temporary sediment trap in a wetland.
Yeah, but you talked about that two months ago.
Well, she-
It didn't take two months to get that done.
Apparently it did.
On their part?
Apparently, I, we-
Apparently on your part?
We were asked to add them, we added one. We were asked to add a second one. We added it in the area that was suggested, but it nipped off a little piece of the wetlands, so I reconfigured it to get it entirely out of the wetlands. It was a small revision.
Well,
Everything's good now.
There's no sense in beating this horse to death, because the commissioner, are, you're satisfying the, the conditions of approval. We seem to be okay with that. So where am I? Did I get significant activity yet?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
I think it was last month.
Yeah, last month.
Yeah, last month.
You look like you've got something to say, do you?
No, I'm just listening at this point, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to, regarding the significant activity of this application.
I think it was done last month.
Last month.
I think I did that.
Yeah.
I just asked.
Oh, my bad.
Maybe the month before.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve this, approve or deny this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Application A 25-1.1, 8 North Turnpike Road, the YMCA of Wallingford, facility expansion be approved with the conditions of approval numbering 13 on the environmental planners' report of May 7th, 2025.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Application A 25 1.3, 15 Sterling, Sterling Drive. Industrial expansion.
Last month.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Brian Panico with Cole Civil Survey.
Could you speak up and could I have your credentials again?
Yes.
Thanks.
For the record, Brian Panico with Cole Civil Survey, project engineer. So I'll be brief for the commission. So this is the expansion at 15 Sterling Drive. We're proposing 62,500 square foot building, readjusting some of the parking lot, and proposing a new parking lot out front. Previously, we were before you. The biggest question, comment, was the concern for some initial soil testing. We did deep test pits to verify ledge, groundwater, soil type, whether or not our underground infiltration would be appropriate and adequate. We have done that, submitted a soils report, also accompanying letter later on, as was requested. I believe at this point, all of that portion has been satisfied. There was also the question of the property, the adjacent property. There's a detention basin along the side of their building. It has a spillway that essentially discharges directly onto this property. We went out, did some additional survey, located that, and then the second portion of this, of the major revisions, was a phasing plan, which we went through and actually designed some diversion channels for during construction, that in the event that basin did fill up and- for during construction that, in the event that basin did fill up and there was some discharge from that spillway, it would adequately be able to make it around the site into temporary sediment basins. And those are also shown on the plan. I believe at this time, all of the comments have been addressed. I think the only outstanding item is the question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, the question of whether or not the detention basin itself is a regulated area?
I didn't think that's what you were going to ask. We could talk about that. There's always often a difference of opinion, whether or not, I was trained, in the DEP training, that we're supposed to regulate storm basins as water bodies because water passes through them. But it won't affect your approval. You're set up for, you've done everything pretty much toward the approval. So I wouldn't worry about it at this time. We could discuss it if the commission wants to discuss that. What I thought you were going to mention is about, what I was talking to Steve about, is the one little thing I want you to explain about your project. You got the existing storm basin, and then you got the proposed storm basin in the same place.
Yep.
So how you're going to route the water around while you're, how can you have it the same? If it rains from above and it's coming in from the parking lot, how do you intend to deal with that fluid situation?
So we basically have it designed on the erosion control plan so that as that water makes its way through the basin, it will get filtered. The idea is that the water from the existing parking lot, the existing parking lot is not being disturbed, with the exception of basically cutting the curb out of it and extending it to the face of the building where the loading docks and whatnot on the building will be. I could point that out.
Oh, microphone.
Good?
Good.
So this is the existing parking lot that will be modified. You can see we've added some green space, and this is the loading dock area. So I believe what we're referring to is the catch basins that are located within this parking lot that are existing flow down to the existing detention basin. So what we're proposing is, as part of, as part of this phasing, phase one of this project would be to create the diversion swale to a temporary sediment trap to the outlet so that any water overflowing from the Stag Industries Holding Property out of that basin has a place to go and doesn't just run straight through the construction site and create a mess. Phase two would be to create another diversion berm with some check dams and to basically get the sediment out of the water as it flows to a temporary sediment trap here. And then eventually, if that were to overflow into this catch basin and out offsite. The idea is that the sediment is being removed by that sediment trap before that water gets into the existing drainage system. Phase three would then be to dig the pond, obviously stabilize it immediately as fast as possible, and then start construction of the actual building, followed by the kind of, the final construction of, and changes to that parking area. So that, in the event, essentially, this existing parking lot is going to remain unchanged as much as humanly possible until the very last second, giving the detention basin a chance to stabilize prior to all that work being done. Obviously, you're not going to get, you know, a perfectly stable basin right away, but, you know, there are measures at the outlet of that basin so that if any sediment does enter that basin, it doesn't just make its way directly down into the existing drainage system.
So continuing that, how, you're going to dig, isn't it going to be a mud puddle? When you have a little basin and you're making it four times the size?
Correct. So the limits of the existing basin, you can kind of see in this area, and that's basically in the bottom of our proposed new basin. And so the idea is to expand it on essentially three of the, three of the four sides of it. So yes, there will be some mud, I guess you could say, and there will be some, you know, issues with that at the day of digging and through the first couple of weeks as things start to get stabilized. But we are proposing, you know, to do as much as we can at that outlet so that that turbid water doesn't directly go straight into the existing system.
Yeah, we wouldn't want it entering the town storm system.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, commissioners, any comments?
No, I don't have any.
Abby?
No.
Mike?
Nope.
Jeff?
No comments.
Jimmy?
Just a question of what I see there. It appears as- It's on.
I agree. I can't hardly hear.
I will speak up a little louder.
Okay, great, thanks, Jim.
The berms that you have described here, that's essential because of the amount of flow you're getting from the area, I guess, north of you?
You're talking about the check dams?
Yeah. Not so much the check dams, your whole berming procedure to keep your platform dry, I assume, from the neighboring flow into it. It appears as though the contours on here seem to be directing it into your property at the, let me look at the directions here. Yes, at the north end, the contours indicate that all the property to the north of you is draining right into the middle of your property. And that's the reason for all that berm that you are building, to keep your platform dry. Is that correct?
Correct. So all along this side of the neighboring building is a, as a detention basin. Right in this location is basically just a small low point. You can see it a little bit better with the topo here, but effectively, right in this area, it flows, and then natural flow, it's kind of a depression right in this area. So there's a little valley, this is high, the parking lot is high, so the water kind of just currently flows straight through. And that's only, that's in the event that this basin fills up to the point where it then does that. So the berming here is not necessarily so much because, not entirely because of the flow coming from this basin toward the building, but also that we are elevating and filling in that whole gully to make the building work. Because the building is at the elevation of that parking lot, which is higher.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think I need to interrupt here because we do, need to do a little bit of housekeeping. I hope Steve alerted you to the fact that we're going, you're going to need to grant the commission an extension, a 65-day extension, retroactively bringing you to today?
I did see that, yes, and so we are-
Okay. All right, so you do grant that extension?
Extension to this meeting, yep.
Okay, and I need a letter coming in?
Okay.
To that effect?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? All right, then we'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 25-1.3, 15 Sterling Drive, Tim Mokee Industrial Expansion Warehouse be deemed not a significant impact activity.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 25-1.3, 15 Sterling Drive, Tim Mokee Industrial Expansion Warehouse be approved with the conditions 1 through 6 on the environmental planner's report of May 2, 2025.
Motion made and seconded?
Second.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
If I could just ask, the item number six on this was the placing of placards allowing the limits of the detention basin, making it a, identifying it as a regulated area. And so that's what we were discussing earlier. Or rather, so are we calling, if we're placing inland wetland water course commission placards on the disturbance boundary line between the drive and the detention basin, that would identify it then as a wetland, at least to the public, correct?
I didn't, I, the hearing is very bad, I'm sorry, but I think why we do that in your situation, which is very open there, is more for the maintenance crew, that you don't, or a construction crew, like, this is a water body, water moves through here, so just don't start digging around willy-nilly. That's, in that case, it's for that reason.
So this wouldn't affect the owner's ability to maintain that in any shape?
Oh, no, no, we want you to maintain it. In fact, you handed in a storm owner maintenance plan that was good.
Yeah, generally, when people see those placards, and then if they see somebody working within them, then they would maybe consider calling you the commission because it is, looks like somebody's doing something within a well. That was the only, only question.
It's those darn workers these days.
Everybody trying to do their job, unbelievable. So yeah, so then, no, we are okay with those conditions.
Anyway, okay. I think we're ready to vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
Ally?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Application A 25-3.1, 142 Hope Hill Road, Town of Wallingford. Anything going on with that?
No, no, no action, and I will be asking them to definitely be at the next meeting, or they got to withdraw.
Well,
Because they're out of time.
They probably need an extension already, but they tell me with yesterday's rain and day before's rain, you could float the Queen Mary on that period. They've, they cut it down so low and they redid the field. It's terrible.
Oh, my word, yes, okay.
Okay, number five, application A 25-3.2, 16 Windy Brook Lane.
This one.
Did you hear my phone call? You already did, oh, good, good for you. No, but that's okay. I mean, it could go on forever. All right, I'm asking who's this guy. Let's see who they are.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Dennis Sannaviva. I'm an attorney representing the owners of 16 Windy Brook Lane. They are behind me in the audience. To my right is a professional science, soil scientist, Martin Brogie, who has written reports that have been part of your record. As I understand it from the environmental planner's report, this has been going on, this matter under a violation for several months. Just by way of background on the parcel, it is a 1.21 acre piece of land. It's part of the Woodlands subdivision that was created back in 1988. The house on this parcel, according to your assessors' records, was built back in 1988 when, again, the house was constructed. My clients purchased it in November of 2022, 34 years after construction. Based on a notice of violation, I believe the environmental planner received an anonymous call from a neighbor about activity going, taking place at the site. There had been a building permit pulled for an in-ground pool, and then site investigation occurred, and we're here before you. We filed an application in response to the notice of violation, or as your planner calls it, an after-the-fact application, which is an interesting nomenclature. In any event, the applicants have engaged Mr. Brogie, who's to my right. He's submitted his report, and he'll be explaining what he found through his investigation. There was a request to delineate the wetlands. That has been done. I know that you did a site walk back in December. Certain activity was suggested to be done, such as removal of few old trees. That has been completed. And we're here tonight to explain to you, in Mr. Brogie's professional opinion, the potential impacts associated with both the proposed and completed activities. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brogie.
Hi, good evening, Martin Brogie, for the record. I'm a soil scientist here in the state of Connecticut. My office is in Madison, Connecticut, under the name of Martin Brogie Incorporated. I've been working as an environmental consultant in the state for the last 35 years. Certainly. One thing I just wanted to check in about is if this commission previously took receipt of this application. I know they were on the agenda for April 2nd last month, but were told not to come. So it's a little unclear as to, as to whether or not we're here to hopefully seek approval, or if you're just taking receipt tonight. It would be nice that we could clarify that.
What's the, what's the question again?
It was received. I think there's just, yeah, it was received in April. As I said, it's been on your agenda for some time.
It's been on, it's been going on quite a while.
Okay, I just wanted to be absolutely sure about that.
Well, which, which application? To satisfy the violations, or the wall around the pool?
The wall around the pool, the pool.
I mean, it's been here. I think the application's been received. I think that's what you're asking.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I-
Go ahead.
Okay, so as a result of the violation, previously, I was called in by the SAS family to delineate the wetland on this property, as instructed by the environmental planner as part of the ongoing violation that was reported. I went out to the site in November. I delineated the wetlands along the eastern part of the property as documented in a report that I hope you have on file dated November 8, 2024, was my first report. And then I described my findings on the site. During that time, in reviewing the records, I saw that there was a second wetland line on the property that I found to be perplexing, and I wanted to get to the bottom of it because it didn't agree with the line that I had found in the field. So I contacted Giuliano Associates, who were very forthcoming. They're working with the SAS family with this application. And they provided me the original 1987 subdivision map of the area before the house was built. And sure enough, there was a line shown as delineated by a soil scientist at that time, which was about 40 to 50 feet west of the line that I had laid. And I found that to be rather confusing, so I went back out to the site. I wanted to get to the bottom of it, and I found fill materials between my line and that line that were at least two feet deep. Red, sandy, silty, gravelly, cobbley soil, and even a piece of glass. It was definitely fill. And so I looked at some old aerial photographs from before the house was built, and then right after the house was built, 1990, 1995, and I could see sort of a line of fill east of the house, so. And there was a cut on the left side of the house, the west side of the house. So it looks like when the house was built, you know, they cut and they filled, you know, through the wetland back at that time, well before the SAS folks had owned it. So that helped me to form my hypothesis around, you know, why I found the line that I did, and it was verified in the field. Further adding to some difficulty in delineating the wetland was the recent activity done by the SAS family that was the subject of the violation, which, where they excavated a large root ball from just west of my line, and then there was a soil stockpile on the, about on the line, that the toe of the slope of the fill on the east side just encroached into my wetland line just a little bit. But I managed to get through the delineation to the best of my ability in that disturbed area, used my best professional judgment to come up with a defensible line through the entire run. Certainly, sites that have been disturbed and filled are more difficult, and we have to exercise the professional judgment. I tried to substantiate that line and document it in my November report. And looking closer at the application materials that were submitted, I thought it would behoove the SAS folks to, and the commission, to get a more detailed, more appropriate description of what their proposed project was. It was difficult to see what exactly they were proposing, the dimensions of what they were proposing, exactly where on the property it fell, because it was just a hand sketch that was originally submitted. So I suggested they engage Giuliano Associates to not only pick up my wetland delineation line, but also for them to stake out where they wanted their retaining wall, and their pool, and their patio, and so forth, and bring Giuliano out so we could specifically see exactly where on the property the proposed project is going, and exactly how that related to the wetland line that I had laid out, as well as the line that was previously delineated in 1987, so we could get all the facts on the table. So once that was done, I completed a second report dated April 23, 2025. second report dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, um, which I hope you have on the record as well. And that report describes, um, the aerial photograph review that I did, the, um, justification for my delineation, the, uh, explanation of the confusion of the previous nineteen eighty-seven line that's on that property, uh, the disturbance from the recent activities, um, and, uh, a description of the proposed project, along with a, a certified map from Giuliano Associates, the surveyor, which shows my line and, and the proposed improvements. And, um, in that report, and on that plan, I demarcate an area where I'm suggesting we do some wetland mitigation, and that was in the general vicinity of where that soil stockpile was, and where that tree root ball that was, um, removed. Um, certainly in November, it was a lot drier, but when I went back out there in the spring of this year, it was, it was fairly wet out there, and I think it could sustain, even though the soils have been significantly disturbed, I think the hydrology would support the wetland vegetation that I proposed. And I propose a collection of trees and shrubs, as well as a wetland seed mix for that area that was disturbed along that wetland boundary, and I think that would do, uh, a nice job to, to mitigate the, the more recent disturbances that occurred in that area. Um, and that is the proposal that we, that we have before you, and the sort of long history of, of what's gone on, and what my involvement has been to, uh, sort out, and to try and make clear for the commission exactly what, uh, what we're proposing here. Thank you.
The only thing I would add to that, Mr. Chairman, is, is I look at the environmental planners' report, I know there's a, sort of a philosophical, uh, diatribe in the middle of the report about, you know, establishing, uh, upland review lines and, and wetland delineations that have changed over time, perhaps the commission using some of its funds to hire somebody to determine, uh, an original, you know, pre-construction wetlands delineation, that there'd be some sort of procedure, uh, in order, that, that you, as a commission, undertaken all of these sorts of events, apparently. But in the last page of, of her report, she says, um, "When the upland review area line is finalized," this is page six of her report, "whichever upland review area boundary line is used, then this office would be ready to recommend that work proposed in the application be approved, because the proposed improvements comprise a small area, and that area will have very little impact on the remaining wetlands to the north and northeast," which is just confirming exactly what Martin has said to you, uh, tonight. So, we're comfortable, uh, with the establishment, the re-establishment, or the delineation of the wetlands, how it changed from the nineteen, late nineteen eighties to the time that he went out, uh, a few months ago. Uh, and the only thing I would say is that if you look at the suggested conditions of approval on page six, one of them is a conservation easement be placed over the remaining wetlands on-site to ensure the protection in the future. And, and again, I think that may be, uh, you know, suspenders and belts. You already have regulations that protect the wetlands, um, you know, putting a conservation easement, you know, who, who will observe it, who will have, is it granted to the town? Who's gonna watch it? I mean, I think at the end of the day, it's pretty clear that, um, you know, the wetlands have been delineated. My, my clients have gone through a substantial expense to, um, comply now, having recognized what's occurred over the past, uh, many years, and then to, to their ownership. Uh, so I think the conservation is a little bit of a, of a, of an overkill on, on the conditions. Other than that, uh, we have no problem, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me ask you this. Is, maybe Erin can chime in on this, too. This, does, uh, DEP treat a filled wetland of ten years ago still a wetland? I thought they had a regulation that said if it was filled X number of years ago, it then, it wasn't a wetland anymore.
Um, you're asking me, I've never heard that, but I have heard it's down to twenty inches. Um, if, if the fill.
Is over twenty inches?
If the fill is over twenty inches, you let it go.
It's not a wetland anymore.
Even if it was at one point in time a wetland.
It's not a wetland anymore if the fill is over twenty inches.
Yes. And then if it's a disturbed wetland, it's called an acquint. Um, disturbed wetland soil that's still wet, but disturbed, that's called an acquint. And then there's the fill soil, which is a UD, but, um, Mr. Brogie didn't indicate any soil types in his report, so I don't know what types of soil he found out there in the various locations.
Well, when we, when we went out there, I think part of the, the original, uh, violation, and then the site investigation, um, I think, at least my opinion was, that additional activity was done in the wetland recently, by the, by the homeowner. And that's what started a, a major part of this going on. Now, what was done looked like you took, could have been half a dozen small trees and made, you know, a flat area. Of course, now, we see bulldozers and fill pushed up. I mean, it's a whole different ballgame than we saw in December, I think. But I believe, and commissioners, help me out here, I believe we accepted the activity that had taken place, and we thought it ended there. We thought that was it, that was going to be it. We certainly didn't expect, I didn't expect, this kind of activity that the pictures show. Part of that going out there was a retaining wall around the pool to support the, the perimeter of the pool at night. So, I, did we, did we grant him approval to his permit at the time to that, to that area? I mean, it was that, did we accept that as being done, and we moved on to just the, the fact of the, uh, retaining wall? I think the gentleman wants to speak.
Sir, uh, for the record, Robert SAS, we did not do any bulldozing or anything else since you were there on December seventh.
This was before we were there you did it.
That's correct.
That's correct, that's what I said.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You were involved in, in disturbing wetlands before we were out there.
Yes.
And that's where we thought that that was done, that, at least I did. I thought that was it. What I saw was the way it was gonna be.
Correct.
Allowed the, the tour, he, he made a comment about, I think there was three trees that were, were dead above the, uh, chess line, and, uh, could be hazardous. And that's when.
These photos are from before we were there. Someone could speak up, please?
Well, that, well, that's what I'm saying. He did the activity before we were there.
Right, right.
I mean, this bulldozing is before we were there.
Right.
But the three, two, three trees, it doesn't make any difference. Um, but it was a good time to go in and get them, because the ground was frozen, instead of rutting up the wetlands that was in that area. So we go from that point, and, and I don't know, thinking that that was resolved, and the major issue became this retaining wall, and that's when the application for the, maybe it's her after-the-fact permit for the retaining wall came in. Now, where, where am I missing something here, Erin? What, what took place that this all blew up to what it is tonight?
I, I believe, you, Mr. SAS thought he was as, he, Mr. SAS wanted his notice of violation lifted. So he was told, "No, no, no, you don't get your notice of violation lifted until you submit an after-the-fact application for that four-foot-high table of fill there." And a little, well, and most of it was in the upland review area, and he wanted to turn it into a patio lawn area.
Whatever, so that's, that's all.
Okay, so, okay, all right. So then he, he said, "Okay," and he came back with an application, and that was submitted on, uh, March, uh, eighteenth. So his application, and there it is, and you got it in your April packet, okay. So then, the problem was, he wanted the wall, this retaining wall, to be a hundred feet long, and the last part of it, the last twenty-five feet of it, would be in what we thought was wetlands. So he couldn't get administrative approval. He was hot to build this, and he goes, "No, no, no, let's get it, maybe the chairman will give me administrative approval." And I contacted you, and he go, "No, no, I knew you couldn't, you can't approve administratively something that's in a wetland." So then, I don't know how it came about, but then Mr. SAS just, you know, hired, had Martin come back again to prove it, "No, this retaining wall is not in a wetland. That's a nineteen eighty-eight wetland line. That is not a real wetland line, so I can please just approve my retaining wall in the upland review area." Okay?
All right, so is this retaining wall, this additional twenty-five feet in an up, in a wetland?
No.
And it's in an upland review area?
Correct.
Is it possible it might have been a wetland in eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay, so now where's the hangup?
Okay, I, well, in order to go ahead and approve it, either tonight or next time, you would, the commission would have to decide to move the upland review line from where it thought it was the last few months, to where Mr. Mr. Brogie thinks it is.
Have to move it. Why can't the wall be in the upland review area?
Well, okay, by this discussion, I guess the, the minutes would show that the up, that the wetland boundary is gonna change, that we were using a nineteen eighty-eight wetland boundary, and now we're gonna go with a different wetland boundary, which is fine. That, all that's fine. I have, and why I spent a lot of time writing in my report, I have, I would like to ask Mr. Brogie questions about his wetland line, because the primary question is, he put flags in November, and the same flags are there today, on what he calls the wetland line, but that's the existing wetland line.
Well, why, what, what?
That's not.
What made it change?
Nobody has showed me, or where the line was before Mr. SAS started altering the terrain. I don't know, I, in the past, I have dealt with lots of soil scientists, and they're able to put their augers down. I understand Mr. Brogie did four test holes. I don't know where they are. He didn't put them on any map we have, I don't think. I couldn't find them. But there is a place where he can establish, oh, this, you know, maybe last summer, this is where the wetlands were. Now, I know there's one place that he found that Mr. SAS had altered, because that's the place where he's proposing a wetland restoration area for a, adding a bunch of plants and trees. So there's at least one place where that line has to be changed, because why else would we restore a wetland if it's not a wetland? It's very confusing to me.
He just admitted the whole site, the, the, the majority of the site was a wetland in, in eighty-seven, okay? DEP Hartford approved the subdivision. We weren't in, in business in eighty-eight, eighty-seven. So you have this site, whether it's been filled, it hasn't been filled, you're searching for a wetland line that's there somewhere, but what is it, what does it really mean to the, to us tonight? When you add twenty-five feet, now, I've gotta get my bearings here. What you call east, I might call west. So, uh, where the, where you come in along the side of the house and walk to the back where the trees that he took out, to your left is the four-foot wall for the pond, or the pool. Is that twenty-five feet continuing on that line?
Continues northward.
It, but it follows that side of the pool. It doesn't take a ninety-degree turn. I only say this because if we recall, that whole area on that end of the pool, he had vehicles there, he had equipment there, he had all kinds of stuff there. So I don't know where we're searching for. What, what line is that, Erin? What's that supposed to mean?
This is the proposed retaining wall.
Okay, so where's the additional twenty-five feet going?
Uh, well, this is the old.
Where, yeah, but where's the twenty-five feet going on the wall? He wants to put a twenty-five feet additional to the wall. Where, which, where's, where's the twenty-five feet going? Well, show me this drawing. Where is the twenty-five feet that you're talking about?
Um, and it's roughly.
It's on this one here. I don't know why, that's the older one, maybe.
It would go like, maybe like that.
No, 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 this, this gentleman you said is talking about adding, you said you're gonna add twenty-five feet to the wall, or to move over the line into the, to the open area?
Well, additionally, the wall was supposed to be fifty feet, seventy feet, or whatever, and he was like, "Well, I'll make a longer wall if you want it."
Well, where, where's the hundred feet? You're not using a mic. You're, you're in trouble with everybody.
Hmm.
I'm having difficulty understanding this additional footage.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Where is it? Is it, is it?
I'll see.
Erin's got a, a map. Apparently, you have the, the, generated the map also. Dwelling.
May, maybe I can clarify? I think I, I think I can. The, the, the wall hasn't changed. Okay, it's just about the, all right, the wall hasn't changed. It's a matter of how much is in the regulated area.
Yeah. Forget about the wetland line. I'm just asking, how much further is this, is this wall? Is this wall going?
Oh, no, it's not there. It's like this, it takes a turn, like a corner.
I'm not explaining myself well enough.
So this is it. This is the proposed retaining wall right here.
Okay, but what, what was it before they wanted to add twenty-five feet?
So that.
The wall doesn't exist?
When, when, when we.
What are you talking about? I mean, you're, you're requesting a wall, and you're telling me it doesn't exist. Of course, it, it doesn't, it's not up there.
In relation to that really steep area from our site visit, shown. Shown roughly in this photo on, I don't know what page this is, dated, uh, twelve oh-three, twenty-four, um, shows that steep area that we all observed in our, um, site visit. And I assumed on site that that's where the retaining wall was going to go. And that is where the retaining wall is going to go.
Yeah.
Only now it's going to hook around, I think there was a tree right near the end of it. It's gonna hook around that tree.
Well, the tree will be gone, but, yeah.
So if I might, Mr. Chairman, that, the reason that we're here, one of the reasons we're here, is that the twenty, the last twenty-five feet of this wall, if you used the original December nineteen eighty-five wetland delineation, would have been in the wetlands. It is no longer in the wetlands, because the current November two thousand twenty-four delineation shows that the wetlands line has changed, uh, forty years later.
I, uh, what I was trying to get a handle on, does this twenty-five feet go into where he was parking his trucks or vehicles? It doesn't?
No.
So it's, does it take a ninety-degree bend and go twenty-five feet? It just, it just ends.
Right.
Don't, you can't talk. You can't, you gotta use a microphone or something. You can talk, but you gotta use a microphone.
Got this.
Um, Jennifer SAS. So the wall is going to go in front of the tree, and it's gonna be about four feet, and it's just gonna kind of go down and go right into the ground. So it's the level.
Well, this, we, we see, um, maps, or we see pictures of, of around your pool.
Yes.
And, um, for example, I think you have the same picture I do, but this picture here, it's got the red silt fence in it, or the red, there you go.
Yes.
Now, is that wall going to be put right along that bank of fill?
Yes, that wall's gonna be put right here.
Gonna be put down, you're not gonna bring it out twenty feet and fill.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
That's, fill's gonna go around that, that wall.
If anything, it'll go closer to that mark of the fill line.
So, but you're looking for it to go twenty-five feet longer than you originally wanted?
This is the only application. This is the original application. I don't know what twenty-five feet she's referring to.
I don't know where it came from either, but I, I just don't, I mean, according to the map here of the pool, you've got quite a bit of patio area up here on top, um, area, so the, 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 I think basically what I'm saying, I don't see where additional twenty-five feet is having any effect on what we're doing here. You can call this the eighty-seven wetland line, you can call this a new wetland line, you can call that. We all know sites all over town have the same problem. But if we were okay there on December, then a lot of what we're doing here is, is a moot point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Erin.
I agree with you. I have no problem approving the building of this retaining wall. That is not, and I said that on page six. That's not my issue. wall. That is not, and I said that on page six. That's not my issue. My issue is, the way I look at it, this retaining wall is twenty-five feet from the area that Mr. Brogie wants us to restore as a wetland, a wetland restoration area, twenty-five feet away. So I don't, I think it's disingenuous to say the retaining wall is no longer, it's twenty-five feet away from a wetland. That should be established. I'm very confused why Mr. Brogie wants this wetland restored, but then doesn't want it to alter the shape of the wetland boundary. I'm very, I don't get that. I, I completely don't get that. If it's, if it's going to be restored, it's got the hydrology, he admits it was disturbed by Mr. Sass, why don't we make that the true wetland line? I, I-
You, you're going to spend a lot of money, and what are you going to gain? What's going to be the gain if you find the, one of the old wetland lines?
No, I'm saying he, he drew it on the map. Here it is. Mr. Brogie drew it. There it is. That should be the new wetland line.
So what does that mean?
I don't, I, I'd like some clarification from Mr. Brogie, why he didn't call it the new wetland line. He, he, I'm very confused.
What effect does he have this on, on the wetland, on the application? None?
Uh, the effect it has is for the future, where is the wetland line on this particular piece of property that we all have spent many hours dealing with? Also, forevermore, that wetland line is going to be, if we, if you, if the commission accepts Mr. Brogie's wetland line, the one he, everyone, the one the owner wants adopted tonight, it's not the true wetland line. It's, I, I'm confounded why he wants us to restore a wetland, which he's saying is not part of the wetlands. I'm very confused on that point.
Well, that's his choice. He can make, make plantings all over the world if he wants.
I might add, his report never talks about wetlands a restoration. It's a mitigation area, and Martin's here to talk about it if you desire.
You have a certified soil scientist creating a current wetland line. I think that you're going to get another soil scientist, they say, yeah, thirty years ago, it was over there. I don't, I don't think that that's going to be money well spent on anybody's part on it. Okay. All right, so where, where are we at here? We are dealing with the after-the-fact permit for the retaining wall. Is that correct, Mr. Seneviva?
That and, I think the balance of the work, let's see, most of the work was, was cleaning up what had been done earlier, getting approval for the work that had been done earlier.
What do you mean? Over in the upland review area?
Retaining wall patio and fence.
Yeah, there was some fencing that had been done earlier in the upland review area and, and part of the patio. So the application is the after-the-fact to get approval for what was already done. That, that was part of your violation.
Well. I don't remember specifically. Go ahead, Mike.
I could have sworn it was just to finish cleaning up what was done.
I didn't realize there was much of anything because he was cleaning the trees out, but as far as anything else, we all felt that that was, what was there was done.
Yeah, I, I'm being told I, I- The proposed project consists of the installation of the stone retaining wall, the patio, and the fence as shown on the plan. A portion of the stone wall and a portion of the fence are located within the fifty-foot regulated area, the, the new identified wetlands area. That's the reason we're here.
What, what fence is this? Is for this basically around the pool?
It's for the pool.
Security fence?
Yes.
All right, well, have you selected the, the vegetation you want to plant?
Yes, it's in my, it's in my report from April.
Okay. All right. How can we rest assured that that vegetation will be planted?
I can provide a letter to the commission once the, it's been installed, send photographs.
Are you installing it?
I will probably work with them to do it. Yeah.
I'm trying to avoid a bond, is what I'm trying to avoid, but I, I really want to feel comfortable that it's going to get done. That's really, is it going to get done?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, so this is an after-the-fact permit. It's not a, in, significant activity on a wetland. So I think, Jimmy, what do you got for comments down there?
I don't see anything of a concern with wetlands. I try to think about what about the future of the wetlands in the area. I don't see anything there. It seems more of a concern of legalities rather than wetland concerns. I'll leave the legalities to the people dealing with legalities. As far as welling concerns are, I don't see any issues. Yeah, there was a mistake made, not by this gentleman, but by people prior to him. So there's a little bit of an option here for reconciliation of what has happened in the past that no one really did. So I think it's to the benefit of the future of wetlands to have this fixed, repaired, do what they can to make it right at this point, and move forward.
Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the application, the after-the-fact application, as submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application eight twenty-five dash three point two sixteen Winding Brook Lane and after-the-fact application be approved with the conditions one through four on the environmental planners' report of May sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
One, one through four, did you say?
One through four, yep.
So you want the conservation easement? Was number two?
No, no conservation easement.
Or I, I don't know. I don't know.
Well.
All right.
With regard to the easement question, if it was connected to something bigger, I would say yes. Is it? Is this parcel connected to a larger area that it has a direct, immediate impact to? I don't see one. I, if you see one, that would make a difference. I don't. Unless the concern for the easement is to clearly say, this is a well and boundary, and we usually use placards for that, which is good. Just the thoughts.
I, I, I think the placards are good. What's the legal aspect of it?
I, I think that makes a lot more sense. I think at the end of the day, the conservation easement, you know, usually it's granted to someone or to the town. I don't, not sure, I, I think to Commissioner Hellman's point, it's, you know, it's going to be a small, narrow strip that starts nowhere and ends nowhere. I mean, it really isn't conducive to the functionality of a conservation easement. You have jurisdiction over the wetlands. You always have and always will.
All right, let's cross off item two on that.
Well, I withdraw the motion. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that eight twenty-five dash three point two sixteen Winding Brook Lane, the after-the-fact application, be approved with the conditions of approval one, three, and four on the environmental planners' report of May sixth, twenty twenty-five, and with the addition of IWWC placards taken from the office be, be set up at appropriate levels.
Every fifty feet?
Every fifty feet.
Okay.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any other discussion? Call for a vote. Teb, or Ally?
Yes.
Teb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching up. I missed that. I had so much going on. Erin, do you want this map back?
Oh, no, I've got copies. Thanks.
Okay.
Is there a related?
Well, he's still got his notice of violation.
Violation that remains?
Yeah.
We'll talk about that later. I don't know. Well, you could, if I asked the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Secretary pointed out the notice of violation is on page two of the agenda.
Okay.
We could deal with it next time, or we could deal with it tonight.
Well, we can deal with it right now. Is there, so the, the, the violation is corrected then? Is there still a violation?
There are after-the-fact applications have been approved, so therefore the violation has been addressed, right?
We can remove it. Not, I'm sorry, but I don't think so. They, they addressed the after, they addressed the four-foot wall of fill and all that. In my view, they did disturb wetlands. If the commission has decided they didn't disturb wetlands, and the notice of violation should be lifted, then you can go ahead and, and lift it. I think that's what was decided when we were out there December ninth, that there is no recourse. There's no recourse to bring them back.
If you're going to try and chase, if you're going to chase that, you'll never get rid of the violation. On your, on your philosophy, there, there's no-
That's, that's why you should lift the violation, yes.
Lift the violation. Motion to lift the violation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to lift the violation on sixteen Winding Brook Lane.
Second, is there a second?
I second.
Motion made. Any discussion?
I think it's appropriate to dismiss it.
Yeah. Okay, call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike? Debbie?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Okay. New business, we haven't, we just got that application, haven't we, Erin?
What is next, please?
The new.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not. We're getting there. We're getting there. I didn't see you sit there, Sigrid. Yeah, so new business, it could be approved tonight, the new business,
but I haven't dealt with it yet.
What do you mean, new business? Pfizer?
Yeah, yeah, I haven't done it yet. I've got to deal with it.
So, so you can't approve it tonight?
Right, they wanted a bond release, which I failed to write in there. It should be written in there. There, that's what they're asking for. Two, they have four bonds. They're asking for two of them to be released, but I got to review it a little bit.
All right, so nothing you can do. You're here for Beaumont Road? Okay, new applications. Is there anything here that, that needs to be dealt with tonight, Erin?
No, you have to receive them. Please receive all five new applications. Most of these I handed out tonight. Well, the last three I handed out tonight on the dais, and the first two, you got your packet on Friday.
Okay. Elections, I believe everyone, we need a full slate. Reports. Farm Hill, what's going on with Farm Hill, retention pond, detention pond?
That was handed over to the town planner to pursue. I don't know, haven't heard anything yet.
As town planner or law department?
The mayor directed the town planner to pursue, perhaps getting a consultant to review the whole valley situation.
Well, I mean, you had, had engineers to draw it, you had a state of Connecticut review it, and now you're going to bring another consultant out?
Well, the problem is, a lot of people have a differing views, a lot of differing views about what should be done out there. So we got to get-
Why wouldn't you go back to what it originally was designed as? Why isn't that one of the views? That's when it got approved. Why wouldn't you go back to that?
Because since then, people have, have built houses and-
They were in violation. They should have got a violation notice.
You mean, back in the seventies?
No, not the seventies. It wasn't, it was, it was-
When they, when they blocked up the drain and-
Oh, 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 after, when they blocked the drain. I thought, because it was built wrong in the first place before the wetland commission took over. It was a DEP permit originally. The DEP approved that-
Yeah, the DEP approved it.
Right.
That was a swamp all across the whole road, whole front.
But then I understand it was built not to spec. It wasn't built right in the first place, but then the pond, okay, and then the people later, maybe ten years later, the people blocked the flow.
Really, the pond is in violation, and they can't understand why, what should be done with it? Oh, well.
Well, because it has to be dredged. It's filled up. It has, it doesn't have storage capacity. It has filled up over the years. Thirty years or whatever, it's, it filled up. So it needs to be dredged.
It's filled up because it's, it's been a full pond rather than a detention pond.
That's speeded it up, yes.
I find it strange. What's it filled up with? I mean, what are you talking, road sands mainly? Because the project was developed and, and functional.
It's deep enough, it's deep enough to have a fountain running.
You know, the, the audio was very bad tonight. I apologize.
It was deep enough for a fountain to run, and this ladder went all the way down to the bottom. I mean, when it was just, well, we'll see how that unfolds. Okay. Violation number two, you're working on, is that wall all done? Is this acceptable now? Can this be lifted?
Oh, oh, no, but I'm, he's done. He said he completed it, I think, Monday. I haven't gone out there to check. I've got photos somewhere here if you want to look at them.
No, but you, you, it's done, but you don't want to re, eliminate the violation?
No, because I want to see the grass grow up. He did a lot of earthwork out there on thirty-nine Jody Drive.
Okay, three sixty Woodhouse Avenue, that's got a whole bunch of stuff. You've got all kinds of stuff going on that.
It's not here tonight.
On that. Okay. Sixty, sixty-seventh, number three, notice of violation, eight oh one North Colony, Beaumont Road?
Yes, and Sigrid's here tonight.
Okay.
So I'll give you an update.
Stop. Name and address, or name.
This is Sigrid Gadwa, here representing Rema Ecological Services. And we were hired by the owners of the Tractor Supply Corporation, Mark DeBabo, and have been working now for, for six years with the, for the original permit for the driveway and parking lot construction, which had altered the course of Patton's Brook and implementing a complicated restoration project. So last, the, last year, actually winter before, this past winter, there was a lot of back and forth over whether or not the restoration was successful, and there was a, a disparate memories of what had happened seven or years ago originally.
I think, I think pretty much, though.
I, no, I, I need to, I need to just start out with this. We actually finally figured out by, I, I found minutes, right after the tree removal, which had been stated to have been, you know, thirty, thirty or more trees, I, we found out that the large trees that were removed were Norway maples, invasive Norway maples, which are a serious problem in floodplain habitats, and it was highly appropriate to, to remove them, even though they were big, beautiful trees. And also, there were, I think, nine box elder trees that were covered with bittersweet vines, but all, and in fact, all nine of those have stump sprouted, and they're thriving and large and vigorous now. So, and the, there were five other trees, two cottonwoods, three cherries, and, and a couple of other box elders that were not cut down that have been there all along. So the, the tree cutting aspect of the notice of violation, in fact, did, did not, is already corrected. But we need, we worked very hard, consistently over six years, trying to control the Japanese knotweed infestation, weakening the rhizome systems by repeated mowing and, and pulling, and also the floodwaters brought in, an infestation of mugwort and garlic mustard. Those seeds were deposited on the floodplain, and those had to be dealt with as well. And birds deposited lots of Asiatic bittersweet vine seeds, which grew up, and over the, we've been controlling those with herbicides. So we, fortunately, the- the, uh, box elders and half a dozen new box elders and, um, three, three large clusters of sumacs provided a good deal of shade that prevented the, the knotweed from being a monoculture in the restoration area as it is immediately adjacent just to the, to the north of the parking lot. And, um, there were a lot of shrubs planted, um, according to the plans, you know, a different native species and those grew well and they were able to coexist with the Japanese knotweed. But nevertheless, there was, I estimated about forty percent cover of Japanese knotweed and we, the decision was made to plant about twenty, um, trees and shrubs, including some large sized trees, because the commission really seemed to want to have more large trees, not just the small sumac trees and the relatively small box elder trees in the corridor, and also to tackle the remaining Japanese knotweed with herbicides. We hired the best habitat type of pesticide application company, All Habitat Services, to do the work. They came out three times last fall and they had agreed with the original Rima strategy that what was extremely important was repeated cutting of the Japanese knotweed beforehand to weaken them so that to, to increase the chances that they would actually be killed instead of just coming back up again, yet again, from the roots. So, um, through, in July and August, we hired different, different people to, um, to cut Japanese knotweed. There's a lot of cutting that was going, and also cutting mugwort, because that's the same thing. If you cut it and cut it and weaken it. And a lot of money was spent and many work hours were spent cutting and, and those two invasives and, and removing them. And, um, then the, I had met with the lead, um, project manager, Desiree Hansen, went over the entire site, explained everything to her, and I, I said that it was quite complicated. There were a lot of things that needed to be saved and avoided and there was, um, there was a lot of, for one thing, there was a lot of bloodroot, which is a beautiful native wildflower all, all across the eastern side of the, the northern side of the site, which was growing under Japanese knotweed. We didn't want that killed. And, um, of course, the planted shrubs. That, then what, I didn't know how it would have turned out. I, I requested that I would be present when, when the work was done to provide guidance and make sure that they didn't spray desirable things. There was, there was, was a key-ish target for the pesticide company, for All Habitat Services, was the, um, a couple of groves of Tree of Heaven, which is a, a really serious invasive because it fosters, um, the spotted lanternfly, which is a bad agricultural pest and also a pest of the cherries that are, and pears that are planted in shopping centers, in commercial areas. It's a horrible pest, which is a big problem in Pennsylvania, Delaware, Southern New York State. It has, it's just getting here and it evolved together with ilanthus and ilanthus fosters it. So it's irresponsible from an economic standpoint for the state to allow ilanthus to proliferate and, and that we emphasized that, that that needed to be done. Now, I had actually missed the, um, the, the stands of ilanthus because from a distance, they have a very similar growth form to sumac, especially in the wintertime. They look, they have thick, um, twigs and, and just the same kind of branching type. And, um, but if you look at them closely, they're very different. The buds are very different, the bud scales, the color of the bark is different. And, oh, what happened is that All Habitat Services had tons of business last year. They hired a bunch of new employees. They, they, people were complaining that they're, they're, they were not up to their former standards. I think because they didn't have, the employees didn't know their, know their vegetation well enough yet. They were too new. They, they made some serious mistakes. They cut down about half of the sumac, I mean, treated with herbicide about half of the sumac, native sumac trees, and they left about fifteen ilanthus trees. And I was horrified when I went out there and to, to check the status of things last, last year. So I, they're going to have to, to make amends for that and do, of course, kill the, the Tree of Heavens that they didn't, but also do some additional replacement tree plantings for all the sumacs that were killed. Unfortunately, sumacs were killed that were shading the stream from the west, keeping the water cool in there that, that had, trees that had a significant function from the, a physical water quality standpoint. And, you know, you'll see a bunch of, of dead trees there now and some of them are Tree of Heaven, most of them are sumac along the west side. The, they also, the, the, uh, uh, All Habitat Services missed about ninety percent of the bittersweet, young bittersweet vines, including a dozen or so that I flagged with pink flagging, just to, because I thought they weren't that conspicuous. But, so that, that has to be remedied. And they, they seem to have killed all the, the nice stand of deer tongue grass, which is a highly valuable grass for birds with a lot of large seeds and it's used for restoration. That had come in on its own, on, along North Colony Road. And when they treated the mugwort, they seem to have also treated the, the deer tongue grass. So I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not happy about that. The, as far as our tree plantings go, um, we, we did have a very severe six week drought immediately after we planted the trees. They were, we had, they, they, the company went, that planted them, went out three times and watered. But, and, um, I was actually, I was relatively pleased with survival of the plantings. But the bigger, um, trees, uh, one of them died entirely and others, they had been six feet tall and now they're two feet tall because all the top growth died, but they're still alive. They still have lower branches. So that, that is unfortunate, but, you know, they'll catch up within a year or so. But I, I do think, um, I need to confer with, um, All Habitat Services and other experts. I'm not sure that, the, some of the knotweed stands that were growing in, on the more upland areas that were frequently mowed, most frequently mowed, were completely controlled, especially along the driveway entrance. Other areas growing, growing in optimal conditions like right close to the brook where the soil is moist and very fertile, there are plenty of shoots coming right back up again. So there, the, all the herbicide treatment did not, did not get rid of them. It did get rid of all the golden rod that was around them. And I'm, we, we're going to need to buy, um, many pounds of wetland seed mix from New England Wetland Plants and spread it in the, on the wetland terrace to, to recreate an herb stratum because it's, it's barren there right now. The, the, you know, the knotweed was controlled. The only thing that, the species that really did not seem to have any adverse effects from the herbicide treatments was the box elder. That's thriving and it's, it's very nice and there are plenty of young box elders as well as the big ones. But it, but that, and it's a good wildlife species. It has maple keys and buds that are food, but it, but it's only, you want more diversity than that. So, um, I guess we have one more year of work and we've, we've got to, um, you know, eat both, a combination of pulling and, um, treating the remaining sprouts and, and trying to plant a competing vegetation, competing ground cover. And I'm wondering, I'm, I'm thinking that on the upland slopes, there's no reason not to just use proven DOT grass mixes that are, that are, um, will, will hold the soil and resisting, you know, re, resist mugwort colonization. I don't, I don't know that, that those, those side slopes, the cut slopes, um, really need to have. Because the trouble is that, that wetland floodplain grasses are, are less dense and vigorous and competitive and less able to exclude the invasive species. So as a, I'm trying to be practical here. I, I want to, I, I do want to try to put the, the floodplain seed mixes down in the terraces and along the brook. But on the, on the, on the hillsides, I'd rather, I'd rather see just regular cool season grasses that DOT uses that, that, that are successful on roadside and can keep, prevent mugwort from coming back in there. So.
Alright, now, when George Logan was in here.
Yeah.
Trying to get the bond back, it was decided that he was to submit, and I believe he did, what plantings or what he was going to do to get the bond back.
Yeah, we gave you a planting.
That's still, it's still in effect?
Yeah, we gave you a planting plan and we implemented it.
Have you planted those yet?
Today, but we, we did what we said we would do.
You, that's, so that's what you're going to do. You're going to submit George's plan.
Well, we have submitted it and we did it.
It's, it's done. Does she know it was done?
Yeah, she knows it was done.
Was it George's plan done, Erin?
It was, it was our, it was George's and my plan together, but.
A year ago or so.
We worked it out together.
Are you talking about the plan from six years ago or his revised ideas for the last time he was here?
The replacement plantings, the, the planting plan, basically.
Has it been?
There were like, I don't know, ten trees, pine trees, sycamores.
Yeah, and then also about fifteen shrubs as well.
Yeah, so, but how are they going? I think the trees died.
Those were planted in October, in early October and, um, they did, they did reasonably well, but they, they were stressed by that drought.
Alright.
And we are going to be able to put in more trees and plants but, because we will get credit for all the sumacs that were killed.
But what about the shrubs?
Okay, you two guys, you two guys strain out, have they been planted of what George, what conditions of approval, alright?
They have been planted, yes.
They haven't been planted yet?
Yes, they have been planted. They, they were planted in October.
But she hasn't seen them.
Okay, so.
No, she hasn't seen them.
Well, she's got, she should see them. If it's satisfied what you guys, you and George have developed, she should be there to see them right now.
Okay, well, we, I'm glad to show them.
Alright, no, no, we're done. We're done. We're going home. Alright, is there anything else that come before the commission tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.